At what notices the meeting to be outlined at Belmar Board of Education on Thursday, April 27th, 2023 at 7:00 PM has been provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 231 Public Laws, 1975. Notice the meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the principal's office of the Belmar Elementary School, 1101 Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey, on January 6th, 2023. Notice the meeting was transmitted to the Esber Park Press, the Post Star, the Municipal Clerk of the Borough of Belmar, and the Lake Como School District on January 6th, 2023. Can I please stand up for the flag?
Capitol allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. So we have the roll call.
Sorry, Adams?
Yes.
Is that Almack?
Here.
Timbaland?
Here.
Brian Conklin?
Here.
Eileen Kay?
Here.
Inspector Herbert?
Michelle Lomas?
Here.
Jennifer Nicolai?
Robert Preston?
Yeah.
Michelle Cartaglia?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, we will have comments from the public on agenda items, although there's a separate comment if you have any questions about the budget. Any comments on any other agenda item? Then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
So we had a lot of, you know, wonderful and positive events and programs for the students who lasted a while. Some really great news statewide is that Start Strong is going to be discontinued as of fall of 2023. That was a test that was replacing MBS LA for a little while there, and they kind of continue to, some people feel like longer than they should have, but they decided that for this fall, they're not going to have it. Take Your Child to Work Day was today, and it was a blast. We had a lot of family members in the building. A lot of staff brought their kids in. I've guarded my son Owen, maybe an extra, Brandon Sloan, which is school age. It was really wonderful and great programming, and they really joined in. The older kids really helped out with classes. You'll see some pictures on the slide shows. We purchased six new outdoor benches, so outdoor lunch is even a larger group of students. More kids get to eat outside. Now, it hasn't been perfect this week, but it's 60 degrees out there, and it's sunny. The kids really want to be outside, so we got the opportunity to do that. Spring sports game started last week, so go Eagles. You know, it's done really well. Suns La Shalali gave us a stack of tickets for our families for the Blue Claw opener during our spring break, so thanks, Mr. Kavanaugh. I think that was part of the St. Patty's Day Parade Committee that had extra tickets that they gave to us and offered them out to the community. We purchased some buses with our stabilization aid grant money. We had a successful grant application, so we're going to have some BES buses, and we're just going to get some lettering soon. So we should have two this spring and one in the fall. We were paying about $700 for every sports game to transport our students. So now we'll be able to transport our students ourselves with still some cost, but some savings there as well. And then some of our regular attending students that go to different schools in our county will be able to save some money there, so that's really great news. Junior National Honor Society induction was this month. Congratulations to the new members, Mrs. Murphy and the faculty council who supported Mrs. Murphy in bringing that on. And I want to thank, although she's not here, Mrs. Herbert for really sparking us to really honor our high achieving scholastic students who also bring a lot of character and service to our school. So we're really proud of that, and it's really wonderful. So thank you, Mrs. Herbert, even though you're not here. I'm sure she'll get the word. Esports team started since our last meeting, so thanks to Mr. O'Donnell for getting all the technical hardware set up. And so that's, so they got started in the last few weeks. That's really great. The program has been growing. Kids are having a lot of fun. You'll also see pictures of those things here. We wanted to showcase all these things with your autism awareness assembly, and our police officers came out. We had a presenter as well that you'll see there in the pictures. So there's so many great things that we've done. Our gardening club has been getting started on planting outside. They were doing a lot of work inside the building, getting the plants going, but now our beds are going. We have two beds that are up and running, and we'll continue to have more within the next week. I wanted to thank the Darden Fund, and I lean into Darden Fund and Nicholas Enterprises for helping support that program and getting that garden back up the way it should be. It's almost there. We're getting there, but we've got plants that are growing in the garden at this point, which is good news. The Tree Commission will be here tomorrow to do our first planting of trees for Arbor Day. There are a group of trees that are at the library. They asked us if we can have some here, and then coincide that with lessons for our late elementary, fourth, fifth graders, and, you know, for them to be responsible for those trees along with the garden club. So those will be planted here tomorrow, and you'll also see some of those pictures. And work to improve the baseball field was great, and, you know, we got a new nail drag, so our field is going to look a lot more even and a lot less weeds. So if you go out to a game, it should look a lot better now. And then we have a bright future. We've got a lot of stuff going on, tons of programming, and it's going to be a crazy seven weeks until we get to the end of the school year, but crazy good, not crazy bad. Okay, I think that's it.
Now, get ready when you have tennis established to have the pickleball, of course.
Yeah.
It's the latest.
That might be the staff, the staff pickleball tournament or something like that.
Anyway, okay, great. At this point, I guess we're going to have the presentation of the audit first, right? So that we can get Mr. Holsford in and out here, unless he has a lot to tell us.
No, I intend to be brief. First of all, thank you for having me. I'm glad to report to the board the results of the audit were excellent. It's nothing I need to bring to your attention in terms of recommendation or finding. I have great communication with Mike throughout the school year, and him and his staff do an excellent job, so great as far as that goes. And our financial position certainly is reasonable. I know I consult a lot with Mike, especially when we're filing our odd sum, which are electronic audit filing. We need to decide where we're going to put various funds we have available to reserves or to tax relief. I know Mike really puts a lot of thought into that, and for he makes his recommendation to you as to what to do. And it's also, he's also always looking forward to the future because that's important. We can't just worry about this year. We've got to worry about what's coming down the road, too. And I know he takes a lot of time and effort to make sure that we're in a good position going forward. So other than that, as I said, everything's good, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about the report or take any questions in general.
That's very good to hear. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Holsford? Good job, good job. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Everybody have a good night. Take care.
You too. Thank you. And now we have our annual budget hearing. Just remember when you're looking at all those things that are being funded for your budget.
We're not going to steal some of those pictures and put them in here. We weren't sure if we were going to run them.
Yeah, so the presentation is basically very similar to last year. I'm just going to compare apples to apples. Our vision statement, like we always have on our every single one of our board agendas and everything that we have, where we try to unite parents, teachers, and the community, and to inspire all of us to, and our students, to strive for excellence, and to basically really try to get our kids to be more productive, and to really get out there and hopefully come to school and be happy in school, and that's what we're trying to strive with our facilities and doing everything in what we're doing. So some of the priorities for our development, for our budget, is basically providing the best educational atmosphere, meeting our strategic plan and support programs while implementing the state mandates, provide our staff with the resources to ensure students receive the best education, maintain the critical infrastructure, improve the safety and security of our facility, and provide the community with the facility that they're proud of. And I think we're really trying to, we've been really doing that. That was, has been our main focus and Mr. Marshall's main focus and Mr. Alvarez's since he got here, his focus as well. So some of our impacts or some of our challenges is how do we maintain a stable impact without sacrificing programs? And how we do that is basically by our revenues and trying to figure out where our revenues are coming and trying to use fund balance, which is from basically the audit that just happened, that Mr. Holsart just gave, using those funds and strategically place them into either reserves or using our funds to help us get into this next coming budget, and which is a two-year lap. We get revenue, we've caught about 1.85 million from Lake Como and tuition revenue. We're doing research on grant lines. I mean, what Mr. Alvarez said, we just got the stabilization aid that got us the buses, things like that we're just looking into. There's another one that we're going to be talking about shortly. Exploring energy cost-saving measures, getting into agreements and cooperative opportunities with surrounding districts, and that's what we're going to really be looking at doing, especially with the buses, is to provide, help us look at routes that we're all, that we're sending to, like kids that are sending to the similar schools. So this way, they could save money, we could save a lot of money, and so hopefully we just work together. That's some of our talks that I was just talking about to Lake Como at their board meeting. The transportation costs are huge. We're having transportation meetings throughout the county, and we're starting to talk to each of the BA's, each BA's and the transportation coordinators. We're talking to see who has what route and see where we could maybe combine the routes, like, you know, there's a couple of districts that are not far from here that have buses, so we're looking at using them as our buses instead of going out to bid for them because the transportation costs are, have increased hugely over the last two years. The other thing is just making decisions, you know, in a fiscal, responsible manner. So with this budget here, we're having an estimate of 593 kids. We have 408 attending here, which is an increase compared to last year or the current year. We have 158 high school students, 18 of bulk tech, and nine special needs placements. Here you can see, this is the pie chart of the revenue sources, so 57% comes from taxpayers, right? So although it's not a huge percentage, it is the majority, so that's one thing that we always take into consideration. Tuition revenue, also a big part of it, and you're starting to see, I guess those other ones are not there, but it's really, so you got, I think the purple one and that dark blue one should be state-funded programs and also federal-funded programs. That's basically our Title I, Title II, IDA funds and stuff like that. And so here's the actual numbers. So comparing last year, comparing it, or this year compared to next year, what we're looking at. So the 2% increase is 187,000. So even though we're going up that 2% increase, that change there, we're still dropping the total revenue by 787,000. The vast majority of that drop is two things, really. Well, it's really more if you look at that federal programs, where we're starting to lose our S2 funds, right? So we're forecasting this upcoming year, this 23, 24, is going to be the last year that I'm aware of. They have extended other programs. The first S2 fund, I think they extended for a little while, but we can't count on that because they literally extended it on their last day. So, but that's where we're losing our funding, so we're running out of them anyway as we're using them. But we have the tuition revenue increase of 128,000. Our appropriate fund balance has decreased. Miscellaneous revenue about the same. Our state aid is going up. The state aid that's there and inside that number really is our extraordinary aid. So the state aid that is given by us to, from the governor or from, you know, from Department of Ed, that actually has decreased. We're part of one of those S2 districts, and so that has decreased. So I know there was a recent article where Belmar, Lake Como are receiving some of their funding back from the S2 cuts. We are, we're applying for the grant. It's actually in our board agenda for tonight to be approved, so we're getting 66% back, which is basically, I think it's like 25,000, but that's part of that funding there. So our total operating budget is going down by about 84,000. Here you can see the tax levy increases and decreases over the past 10 years. And this is how, this is the analysis of the tax levy versus at your assessed home value. So you can see the tax rate, even though we're increasing the taxes by 2%, the estimated tax rate is on, is going up very little. The reason why that really is the estimated tax rate is going up very little is because the home values are going up significantly. You know, so in prior, the prior year, I think I had like a $300,000 home assessed value and then a 400, and then I think a 500. I got rid of those because there's not too many homes that have $300,000 value anymore at this point. Oh, not here. So just wanted to kind of give you a little estimate of where the percentage of your tax might be going to. So just the summary of the revenues, right? So we have a 2% increase, tax levy increase of about 187,000 divided over that 2,000 671 parcel of land is about $70 per parcel of land. Now, it doesn't always equate to it, but it's basically, that's, I'm just trying to kind of show you, like, how much it really is going up per piece of land, but it's not drastic of a huge impact. The decrease in state aid, that's the actual state aid decrease that we actually received, it's 57,000, but our tuition increase, our tuition revenue is increasing by 120,000. We're using 759,000 of free fund balance. Of that fund balance, 25,000 is that stable, supplemental stabilization aid that we're going to be, that basically we're applying for to get that money back from this S2 cuts. The reason why that fund balance is so high is it's not normally that high. Normally, we're sitting at about a $300, $400,000 fund balance. The reason why that fund balance is so high is that we were at a, we were allowed to go to a 4%. Jeez, just lost it. What is that, the excess surplus? 4% of the excess surplus, now we're down, we're going back down to 2%. The reason why, I think personally, the reason why they went, allowed us to go to a 4% surplus is because of the fact with all the S2 funds, we needed to have some type of cash flow, because by the time, all the money that we're spending, we have to spend the money in order to get it back with S2. So we needed a cash flow, so they allowed us to go up to a 4% over the last two years, but now that's going back to 2%. So now that's going back to 2%, it gets thrown back into our fund balance, and we have to use it. We're using 250,000 for our tuition reserves, which was just put in from at the end of the audit that Mr. Holsart just gave to us. And then we had, so I already went over that we have $84,000 decrease in the revenue decrease in the budget, operating budget, and the total overall decrease is 787,000. And again, that's mainly from our special funding from the state. So here's our pie chart on the expenditures. So again, student program, 54%, and support services is about 16.5%. Plan operations is only 4%, school central administration is 4.5%, 5%. And grant entitlements is another where we are spending our money, which is another So here's the actual dollars. So again, student programs, it's actually going up, 689,000. A lot of that is tuition for, at a district, tuition going to Manswan, and tuition going, and our transportation costs. Like I said, transportation costs have skyrocketed. As of right now, I'm preparing to, for, if we didn't have the buses, because we didn't have them at the time, we still don't have them, but I had to prepare for that. But, so we're hoping that when we get the buses, we're going to figure out what is our highest cost transportation, and then we're going to try to mitigate that by using the buses that we're taking. Support services going up 42,000. Plan operations are decreasing by 343,000. Central administration's going down, and you can see basically everything else is going down. And again, grant entitlements, you can see that decrease. The capital expenditure is going down, a decrease of 143,000. That was for the playground. I remember if you guys remember that, we drew that on the last, in the last year's, or the current US budget for the playground. Oh, yeah. And there will be a picture on here, too. So, and the debt service is going down 310,000. The reason why debt service is going down 310,000 is because the last bond that we had just got paid off this past year. So that's the reason why you see it's such a big decrease, which is nice. So where does money go? Kind of said a lot of it.
And is it tuition, went up 10%, right? Or something like that?
12%. Mass ones tuition went up 12%. So there, and the justification for that is their enrollment decreased by 10, and with the increase of 2% on their level, so. So where does money go? Tuition costs, transportation costs, special development, salary increases, health benefit costs, which is another huge cost, and facility maintenance. And just some of the pictures of the things that we've been doing around at the school. Here's a picture of the garden that we're talking about. Here's the playground. Those are the new benches. Those are our new cafeteria tables, which we showcased at two meetings ago. That's the look of our new rest on that. And some of the uniforms that are, we're doing. Justin on his, the writing machine.
His new toilet. That should make our fields a lot more consistent, if you like.
And then also, we're doing new clubs, right? So we have, we have book club, fishing club, tennis club, esports. That's it. Anybody have any questions?
Anyone in the public or board have questions? About the budget?
Just on the buses.
Where you park it?
That's a good question. So we, so we have been thinking about that. We are thinking about towards the rear, towards the fence line where the, you know, the open field is.
Yeah, the back end of our staff parking lot, there's an open parking lot or two there spot that we should be able to utilize next to the board office on the east side towards the beach. We should be able to put one there without losing delivery space and exit and entrance. I mean, it's possible that we could talk to the town about parking them in the park if we, if we felt like, hey, we're having a hard time bringing them around. But that is one of the charges that we have for the summer is saying, okay, what is our parking place look like? What's our best opportunity? How do we make sure we have a camera view of our buses at night to make sure that we can hold anybody accountable that might be doing something to them, but, you know, have them openly open enough and not hit them at the same time.
And then whose driver?
So that's our next charge. Our next charge is now that we've got buses, is, do you have a CDL? But, you know, so we're going to, we have, me and Michael have come up with a preliminary plan on a multi kind of faceted approach to how to handle this, how to.
You're getting your bus driver's license first, and you're getting it second.
We might be doing something.
So, but regarding what we were just about to say with unbudgeted funds, right, because of salaries and stuff, but take into account, right, so we have one route that goes to, that has two kids on it, that goes to one school, so that's a hundred grade. And so that's where we're looking at it. That's the reason why, the only way that this will work is we got to take our highest route and to mitigate that cost.
And see if we can get somebody next door. Hey, Bradley Beech, you're going up there, too? Why don't we pick you up instead of $45,000 or $50,000 you're paying, let's do 35, 32? How does that sound to you? Like 12 grand? Sure. So that's where we're trying to strategically place these buses, and then the staffing is something that we've discussed a lot, and we have a plan that we're rolling out pretty soon.
Any contracts in place with any of the other districts, or if this is just build it and they will come?
Preliminary talks.
Yes.
I've had some preliminary talks with a couple of local districts who feel like they're getting, you know, bamboozled, you know, so to speak, by the bus companies. And listen, it's not their fault. There's a demand, and if you want, if you want your demand met, then this is what it costs. But the stabilization aid offered us an opportunity to apply for monies that are not local monies. Because we're losing so much state aid, they said, okay, if you've got a plan to save your district money long-term, because let's say you're going to lose, you know, $150,000 every year for the next 10 years, that's 1.5 million dollars, how are you going to make that up? We're going to have to make that up by getting really creative about how we're saving money. And so that's kind of why we went with the buses, because we thought it was something that was viable, that the grant, the grant reviewers would consider, okay, this isn't a one-time purchase. This is a purchase that's going to have a long-term effect on how they operate.
So the buses are purchased through the grant.
Correct.
Salaries will be based on cost savings from the routes you no longer have.
Correct.
Contracted out, and then how about like term, long-term care for the buses, service, gas, all that stuff?
So we'll be, we'll be talking to the town about, maybe there's some kind of cooperative engagement there. There might be a need, you know, for, let's say the library might have a need for busing, and we might be able to offer a service, and, you know, in turn, they may be able to say, okay, we'll handle it. Maybe it's often, talk to them about that. There hasn't been any formal talks, but just kind of like, oh, you guys get buses, maybe we can talk about it. So nothing official, but we're going to be taking a look at all options. We feel like even if we had to pay for the basic maintenance of these buses, and they're going to be under warranty and having costs a penny, the basic maintenance, blow changes and those types of things, we definitely say it's a possibility, no matter what.
In regard to our tuition increases, and then you mentioned Manswan, are we seeing an increase also at Red Bank, or what's that kind of percentage of the work?
So Red Bank has an increase as well. It wasn't 12%. So.
To send the kids to a.
Yeah, I could try to look for it, but off the top of my head.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, every school district is going up. I mean, it's just, it's across the board. Just because, you know, transportation costs, salaries go up, you know, health insurance, it's just not 12%.
Right.
You know, and that's where, and.
And I think if my thoughts of trend are correct, we have less kids going out to Red Bank than the kids that are graduating like this year.
So the issue, too, is, is that I think there weren't that many kids. The kids that did apply to Red Bank, I don't think a lot of them got in.
We did have some students that got in.
Yeah.
And then some students that got in to Red Bank, but also got into an academy and decided, well, listen, I'll, you know, go to communications trial, I don't know what children may come into.
Yeah. So this upcoming year, Red Bank's tuition is 16,000 E36 versus Manswan's tuition at 19,540. So we're going to send 110 kids forward.
Yeah. Anyone else have any other questions about the budget? Can I have a motion to approve the budget that I don't want to read at all, but that's listed in the agenda? Ms. Chek, second. Lomas? Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Almack?
Yes.
Ms. Chek?
Yes.
Ms. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
Ms. Frey?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
And then, please, our next, oh, okay. Where am I? Oh, did we just approve all of those?
Yeah, there was a couple pages.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March meeting? So, um, any comments, corrections? Roll call.
Ms. Almack?
Yes.
Ms. Chek?
Abstained.
Ms. Conklin?
Abstained, I wasn't at the meeting.
Ms. Lomas?
Abstained.
Mr. Preston?
Sure. I don't know, though.
Ms. Cartaglia? You're here, you're here.
And we all.
Ms. Frey?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Three, four, five.
I just did that.
Yeah, five out of any character?
Back on. Somebody was going to have to change. Okay. Personnel matters.
Personnel, that the tenured teachers and the board salary be approved for 23, 24, but the non-tenured teachers and the board salary schedule also be approved for 23, 24 to approach Samantha Sabatini, who will be practicing hours from September to December. She had Georgian Court for her psychology program supervised by Megan Keller, who's on our CST team. That Alex Flores be hired as a tenured track school, school social worker for 23, 24. At step three, she's currently been with us for two years covering maternity leave. That person resigned last, if you remember, there was a recognition last, Alexandra Laird resigned last meeting, and so now Alexandra Flores has been with us. Um, we put it out there, she applied, we met with her, and we think it's a great fit, she's done a great job over the last two years. So, um, medical leave for a few staff members there, uh, then the resignation of, uh, Justin Marsh, uh, with regret. Um, he's, you know, he, uh, he's moving up. He has the opportunity to be about thirty-five minutes closer to home. Um, yeah, his kids are about my kids' age, so I think they're about five and eight. Um, and he's now gonna be the director of facilities for a district that has five schools and about twenty-five students. So it's definitely a step up for him and we're really proud of, proud of him. We got a couple of messages from a few people about, you know, the kind of work he's done here. And, you know, it speaks for itself, you know, when you took a look at the beginning of the school year in September, when you walked up to the building, it looked a lot different than it had in the past. The grass looked great, there's bushes, flowers, um, it really represented what we want a main street school to look like, uh, here in Bellmar. I know, just to potentially have a few more things to say as well.
Yeah, he's just gonna be really missed because I think that we relied on him a lot. He did a lot for us, um, just building sets and stuff and, you know, uh, Mrs. White over there shaking her head. He also did tell me that you gave him a dirty look this afternoon, by the way.
At least I found out before the meeting.
Yeah, so, um, so he's truly gonna be missed, so. But, but it is the right move for him, it's, it's a good spot, uh, position for him and it's just the next step up.
Yep.
Yeah, good for him, sad for us.
Yep, there you go. Me and Michael be evaluating our needs and then taking steps from there. Uh, that was very recent within the last couple of days. Um, and then we also have a substitute for approval.
Okay, can someone move the, uh, personnel items for? Mr. Conklin, Ms. Chuck, second, uh, any comments or questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Olmec?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Policy items?
Last month, we, um, I mentioned all the policy items and I kind of gave a brief synopsis about all of them and nobody had any issues, so we're just moving to, um, you know. Yeah, just for the second reading, if anybody has any questions?
I will take that as a motion to approve the policy.
Mine.
Second, Ms. Chuck, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Olmec?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Charles, want to talk about the education operations?
Education operations, uh, we've got Colored Classics who offers our food service, um, we'll see some, uh, some information there about them. Purchase of paid schools, contract with paid schools, which is just a different system for us to do our school lunch payment system. Uh, travel and professional development, uh, according to the board's schedule, uh, that was shared. That the twenty-two, twenty-three bus evacuation drill be approved, we have to do that through FUSAC, just making sure the approval of things we have to do for compliance. That the board field trips for list for twenty-twenty-three are approved, um, non-public technology order, uh, at, at the amount of eleven, uh, eleven thousand four hundred dollars more or less is approved. Uh, and that's for, um, one of the local districts, they do get funds through the state, they have to get it through us. And so Michael helps, um, them manage that part of it for the accountability for the state. The state's gonna give private schools money, they want accountability, so they run it through your local town Board of Education, uh, BA, which kind of is more work for us, but it is what it is, it's for kids, so we're okay with it.
Can someone move the education operations item? Second, Lomas, any questions or comments?
Um, paid schools, is, so that's what they say, is that what, um, the kids use like when we have the, the accounts and stuff?
Right, so it's, go ahead, Michael, Michael knows a lot about it, but.
Sure. Uh, so, so, so basically, NutriKids is no longer really going to be, um, serviced and so they're kind of being phased out. So we had to be looking for some other type of system to go to. Um, Masswans uses paid schools, thinks paid schools, um, it also links up to Genesis, which actually is very helpful for us because when, right now with NutriKids, if a child, uh, or a family applies for free reduced application, we have to manually put it in Genesis and then it has to get manually put into free, uh, into NutriKids. With this system, it actually automatically happens, so it's kind of nice. Um, it also offers us, um, a little bit more flexibility where, uh, if we need to collect, uh, like other fees or, or trip charges, I don't know, whatever. It's, it's just a system that they're going with.
Much more automated.
Yeah.
Is what it comes down to.
It's also.
These systems, they last about ten years and then they have to get upgraded because, you know, our expectations ten years ago, for our phones changed, our expectation for our lives changed, so we have to just upgrade as they go. And they stopped, like you said, they stopped servicing them, so, you know, it's, it's just time to.
And is, uh, it's for next year?
It's for next year, correct.
Do, do the, can the kids only pay with the account or can you pay with credit card or Apple Pay?
Uh, that I don't know.
You mean with the system? Yeah.
That I don't know, so I will look into.
Like, that's the system, right, like the payment processing too?
You pay.
Uh, I think.
It's usually like you pay your.
You pay into the account at home.
You know what, when the kids come in to use it, so they give you an account number to use it, right?
Right. And they also pay with credit card or Apple Pay?
I don't know, I know in Masswans, I know in Masswans they can pay by cash if they don't have any money, but I don't think in Masswans they can pay by Apple Pay or credit card.
Not sure.
Okay.
Any questions?
Um, what can we call this?
Uh, Ms. Olmec?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, the final items, take your certifications and please, Lomas.
All right, so on the finance, uh, we have our, the monthly certification as of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, that no budgetary linearms went into, uh, negger for overpayment. So for resolutions or for, uh, that needs to be approved. So number one is the bills, uh, bills list for the month of March at one point eight million and the one, and the bills for April at one point two million. Um, number two is the board secretary and treasurer report for the month of March for twenty-three. Number three is the monthly transfer report for March of twenty-three. Number four is the budget transfer report for March of twenty-three. Uh, number five is the, uh, certification of the board secretary and treasurer report for March of twenty-three. Number six is, uh, that the NJSEC safety grant is approved, this is a grant that we apply for every single year, so roughly five thousand dollars. Um, number seven is the, um, annual comprehensive financial report that Mr. Hossart just presented to us. Uh, number eight is, uh, the schedule of the school tax related payments that is, um, that we ask for, um, when the, the borough pays us. And number nine is the submission for that supplemental stabilization aid, which is that sixty-six percent of the S-two cuts that we're getting. And then number ten is to approve the capital reserve withdrawal of thirty-eight thousand for the replacement of the rooftop unit on the board office. So just to give you a little insight to that is that unit has been deteriorating. We have holes in the ductwork and we're actually getting water into the board office. So we need to replace that pretty badly, um, and also it's been leaking. So we've had two repairs this past year on it, it's still not going right. And then Mr. Marsh just recommended that we do this fix. Um, in, or since we have the funds in, in our capital reserve, I figured we could just use those funds. And so it's where we keep the money that we need right now to hopefully offset the future possible uses to go into that fund balance. This is the way, just to kind of help offset that cost.
Can someone move the finance items? Mr. Conklin, Ms. Chuck, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Uh, Ms. Olmec?
Yes.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaya?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Anyone have a Masswans report now, Ms. Harper's not here, anybody go? Uh, I heard of it at my, at another meeting I attended, that they went over their budget and they did increase their tuition, that's how I knew. And they, they gave out a lot of awards to students at the last meeting, as I understand. That's about as much information as I have. Uh, communications, uh, we have, uh, we did receive a letter to the board that will involve individual privacy. We'll talk about in our executive session. Um, any old business? Any new business? Uh, comments from the public, we did get one comment from a person who wanted to be here via text, so we can summarize with that.
So Dawn Taylor, who I think a lot of people know, um, she just wanted me to share this with, with the board and with the public. Uh, she's saying, please share this with the board for, uh, that working for Mr. Marsh is a privilege. He had such a difference in our facility in town. Uh, when I walk in the halls and our wonderful school, I see the care that he puts into everything. I'm grateful for the board of hiring the residential staff and especially Mr. Marsh.
Okay, um, then the next thing we have is just, I'll just go over, did I miss something? So just the dates to remember for everybody?
I'm sorry, can we just go back one second? This is one question, this is on something that we had talked about previously.
Old business, though.
It is old business, I'm sorry. Um, so we got the go-ahead from the town of Bellmar to do the banners and replicate what Lake Como is doing for the high school seniors. Um, the town is actually for this year going to take up the bill for that. Um, and then we're gonna try and figure out how to fund it going forward. So that is in motion, that was approved at their meeting.
Wonderful.
Will you be, um, taking the pictures?
Um, no, so parents would provide pictures on their own. So what happens is we reach out to all the parents in Bellmar, um, letting them know that's the opportunity and they can choose to participate or not participate. And then they supply where their kids are going to school and a picture, and then we have a company that puts a quality builder.
For eighth grade and, uh, seniors?
No, it's for seniors in high school.
Um, under old businesses, well, was there any follow-up group? Wait, sorry, I didn't notice they were, uh, she, um, for ten minutes, the course school, if there was a question of.
Yes, there was, I forgot about, um, not, I didn't forget about, I have.
Followed up.
Yeah, followed. So, um, I did look into our past practice with this, um, and there were some concerns that I had about how it was operated. And there were concerns from the previous administration about the concerns about supervision of students. Where we had a lot of students come in for, let's say, ten or fifteen minutes.
Coming in during. Taking the weather.
To come in the morning, like ten minutes before we open, to have it, the school available for people to walk in. We do have a breakfast program that is, the doors are open till seven fifty every morning for students to come in, have breakfast, grab a chocolate milk if you want, and then, you know, uh, spend that time, that supervised and paid for through our lunch program. Um, the question was, there might be ten minutes between seven fifty-five and eight oh five. Um, I did find some, some issues, right? The one pro is it would be convenient, it'd be convenient if somebody got here early to be here. There's a lot of concerns, though, about who's coming, how many students are coming, what ratio of students do I have to staff? Can I get qualified staff to do it? What we know about school supervision is that if I have a certified staff member, I'm gonna less likely have a problem. If I have a para who's supervising a bunch of students, the students don't respond the same. And the problem that we had in the past is that there are very few people that would sign up for it because what we're talking about for a para is about fifteen minutes. At eighteen dollars an hour, that's four dollars and fifty cents a day, to watch a bunch of kids right before they get started in an unstructured environment where there isn't a real mission to what we're doing except for, hey, we're opening up the doors. The question is then, okay, what are they allowed to do? Can they go in the jungle gym if they're little kids? And can they go in the big gym if they're big kids? And so, um, what's happened in the past too during that time is that sometimes kids got injured. My nurse doesn't show up till eight o'clock, um, and I have kids, you know, getting bumped, hurting themselves, getting scraped up. And then we've got, or kind of, we had a understaffing of people trying to manage how do I take care of this child without losing contact with these students who might be doing something separate? Now, um, so that number varies tremendously, the ratio can change. The pre-K and K students require a lot more supervision, right? There's a reason why we have a, a max of fifteen, uh, students in a pre-K classroom with a, with a teacher and a para because you're talking about seven and a half kids per one adult in class maximum. And if I'm gonna have something earlier than that, there's no way I'm gonna be able to staff that. Um, and so it kind of comes into the teacher contract timing. People might say, hey, can you shift the teacher time? Okay, let's say I get four teachers to do that for fifteen minutes, that's an hour of instruction I'm losing during the school day. It's a hundred and eighty hours of instruction time I'm losing. And then I'm, I'm taking my focus from my strategic planning to the seven days in the spring that's raining. You know, it's tough, I, I get the convenience issue, but I think that there's an option where people can come to lunch. If there's a, if there's a, you guys can sense that I'm not really for this, right?
I was gonna say, why didn't you just say not recommend?
I'm not recommending.
As a parent, because I'm the one who brought it up, I just don't, I guess what I don't understand is how late can they, then how late, what is late? So eight oh five is when you're, you, you open the doors, then what is considered late?
Eight oh, eight fifteen, we close those doors, they have to go to the front door. It's, you know, it, it's funny, if you're at eight o'clock out there, there's like four kids that I can count on being there every day and they like to hang out together. And then right at eight oh three, a whole bunch start coming in, on the middle school side especially, right? And then eight oh five, they really start coming in. So we're talking about a few minutes there. I'm not recommending it because I feel like it's very hard to staff, um, because it's not worth the money for our staff to come in and do it.
I, well, we recommend, but we, um, offered that some parents would come in and volunteer.
Then, then the problem, I can't take liability for parent supervision and how parents decide to operate with other kids. I, I can't, I, that would be very difficult for me.
Forget you.
It's just, it's just hard, I mean, I know half of that, that.
There's a liability piece there.
It's so late and I feel like then school's not really starting until like thirty.
No, I mean, you get a couple of stragglers by, I'm at the door, you see me at the door pretty often, not every day, I mean, Mr. Bassman's every day, but, um, there's only a handful of kids that when like eight, ten, eight, twelve shows up, that they're kind of still coming in and we're kind of like, let's go, let's go. Most everybody, I'd say ninety-five percent of the students by eight, twelve are already upstairs. There's a couple of stragglers that have a hard time getting out of bed because they're in eighth grade and they're just, that's how they operate.
What is the instructional time start?
Yeah, it starts at eight fifteen, they should be, you know, that's when they shouldn't really be up there, but we're keeping those doors and, you know, they're getting settled, those last couple of kids are getting settled, like, but you want to get those lunch orders downstairs, we really want to get the instruction.
Eight oh five, doors open at fifteen, instructional time starts. So you have ten minutes built into your contract for prior instructional times.
They have to be, staff have to be here at eight, right? So at eight oh five, the students arrive, so you have to, you should be at your door ready for, to receive students or at your post if you don't have students received to make sure the kids are moving through the building. I, I know that it kind of, I don't, I don't.
It's not really even the inconvenience, honestly, I'm telling you, and I know, Kennedy, you feel like that too. It's impossible to get to drop, it's like, when it's raining, you can't park, because people are, it's like, it's so hard. It's not really an inconvenience thing, it's just like, what are you gonna?
Mine's not a time issue, mine is like, you would never ask your staff to stand outside for ten minutes and then have to teach all day in the pouring rain, but you're gonna have a handful of kids out there in the pouring rain whose parents have no choice but to drop them off at a specific time, soaking wet or in the freezing cold. And I dropped my kids off that early before and they're like, I'm like, just sit in the car, I guess, and wait. And so you can run into the, at eight oh five, you can run into the building. So mine, I'm not so worried about the logistics of time, but like, you never ask teachers to wait outside in the rain and then teach all day.
Can I ask a question, uh, because I wasn't at the meeting last, so I apologize. So I don't understand, what is the difference between this year versus past years? Or do we have the issue in past years or is there?
In the last few years, it's COVID. No, in the last few years during COVID, there wasn't an issue because it didn't issue. We weren't a lot of group students together.
Right, but even before that, like, I don't, but my kids were here, like, I don't ever remember that being an issue. That's what I'm trying to figure out, like, what has happened that there's an issue?
Before COVID, they used to come inside.
Can the kids go to the breakfast and not order anything? Oh, that's right, they used to come in the auditorium, didn't they?
Yeah. They must have seen the gym, or the gym, or the gym.
The gym, or the, oh, that's it. Thank you, everybody, I couldn't remember what was different.
Yeah, and so it's, it's difficult, I mean, that's the, that's, there's always a, there's a trade-off. For anything that we want to have happen, there's gonna be something else that takes the, takes the hit for it. We just have to, uh, you know, there has to be, we, there has to be a decision about like, what are we, what are? We just have to, uh, you know, there has to be, we, there has to be a decision about, like, what are we, what are we making a decision on? Right? And yes, I wouldn't have my teachers, but they know, at eight o'clock, that's when they're, that's when they come in, right? So, I, I don't know, I mean...
And there are adults, and they can choose, right? These kids can choose.
I wasn't here for, I wasn't here for this, right? So, I was asked to, let's, let's take a look at it, do some research. I wasn't here during this time. I've done this in other schools, where I realized this is really problematic. The amount of people that are willing to, to supervise, and the amount of students that fluctuate from day to day. Today, it might be two of us and, and twelve kids, and tomorrow it's fifty, and there's two of us, or sixty, and you just don't know what you're gonna get. Now, if you have a, uh, if you have a, a before-school program like at Champions that you pay, which I do personally, in my family, because I have to be here early at a certain time, my son's school just only starts at E forty-five, um, I have to pay for before care. It's, it's something I can ask Champions if they'd like to do, but I feel like that the opportunity to have breakfast here, and breakfast is open, uh, there's an opportunity there to save that money, have your kid supervised, and at very little cost. Um, it's just this ten-minute period that is kind of problematic, but there's a, there's gonna be a trade-off. Um, is it possible for me to make a shift? Yeah, but then I'm losing instructional time, you know, a hundred and eighty hours of instructional time, maybe, depending on, on who, I would, I would ask to do that, if I have volunteers.
Is eight fifteen instructor, is that the start?
So, so what you have is, so let's say we open the doors at seven fifty-five for students who want to come in. Right, instead of eight oh five. Um, who's covering that? And then, are they going to be ready? Can they transition at eight oh five directly from where they are downstairs to now my classroom, where I'm supposed to be accepting kids at eight oh five? I'm now in the basement, it's gonna take me a few minutes to get up there, kids are unsupervised upstairs. There's a myriad of, of trade-offs.
Every single teacher has a period one class.
Right, so your classroom teacher, I can't guarantee that I'll, and so, I can't always guarantee that I'm gonna get a non-classroom teacher to say, I want to come in early for fifteen minutes. And maybe leave early, but then what, what happens? I have to cover that person at the end of the day and say, hey, for the last ten minutes of class, that's not really valuable instructional time, I'm just gonna have somebody who teaches math come into social studies. What's that?
PMO?
No, no, the kids will, they'll leave their class with their, they go to their last special with their bag. If they have gym at the end of the day, they go there with their bag.
Teacher's contract goes to the end of the school day, or goes fifteen minutes past the...
No, it goes past the end of the school day.
Goes directly into the school day?
Yeah, it's, it's just about there. It's eight to three, and we're eight oh five to two fifty-five. So, that five minutes of two fifty-five, kids are still meandering, and they're, if you're on the middle school side, they're hanging out, and they're starting to like, kick each other in the butt, or do something they shouldn't be doing. So, we have our teachers out there, so those five minutes to make sure, get to your bike, and get moving.
Two minutes past school day end, three o'clock, the teacher's day in. Eight oh five, the school day ends, at three o'clock, the teacher's day in.
The teacher contract ends, yeah. There's not a lot of time there.
Are you having an entrance issue? Is this just at the middle school side, or at the, like, how do you handle the elementary school stuff? Is there any issue over there, or are we just talking that middle school side?
Well, you know, the things, the thing about the, the kids on the elementary side is they're took, they're dropped off by, by an adult, because they don't have, they can't run themselves. So, it tends to be, that we know how middle schools operate, right? They don't bring coats, they, they wear in shorts, and it's thirty-eight degrees, and they bring a hoodie. This is enough, mom, I don't need anything else. And then they're getting rained on, right? Because they're, I don't want to wear, bring an umbrella, that's corny, that's for, you know, whoever. And so, they don't want an umbrella, and they don't want to be in raincoat. They get a little here, a little early, with our younger kids, their parents are there, they're prepared, they have umbrellas, everybody's good for the weather. And many people walk, right? It's just when you get to the middle school age that they're, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, I feel like there's a lot, kind of...
What if they build an open... I was just gonna say that, if there's just an area they could stand in?
A ten, oh, a ten.
Like a ten by ten ten.
More open, so they're getting away.
All right, I mean...
Oh, you know, the other one that rolls back once.
Oh, there you go, even better.
Okay.
Put a little lunch table on there.
I, I'm, I'm willing to talk to Michael about that, and then we'd have to talk to the board attorney, right? To say, okay, if we're gonna put this out there, and students come to it, what res, do we have a responsibility to supervise them now? Because we're saying, hey, this is a place where you can hang out.
They're gonna have a...
Anyway...
But don't they hang out on sunny days? Don't they, don't your kids come early, like, on a sunny day and hang out? You know, where you're not allowed to see them?
Yeah, because that's my issue, just for me, it's like, and I don't, I don't...
So, that's, that'll be at the turn.
Okay, okay, you're saying, you can't hang out, don't the kids come early now to hang out on a sunny day? Or no, they used to, I don't know if that's allowed anymore.
There's not that many kids out there that early.
Okay, just curious.
I, I, I don't know, I mean, I'll take a count, I'll start taking a count. There we go. I, I recognize that there's no perfect answer for this, right? Um, and so, I'm sorry that...
All right, yeah, now, it, now that there, now that we've had two old business items, right, after the fact, there's anything else, any other of old business. So, our dates to remember, April twenty-eighth, Arboretre Commission, May fourth, eighth grade trip, parent meeting, May tenth, PTO, Mother's Day Jewelry Sale, May tenth, Champions Fun Night, May eleventh, K to twelve, two, Math and Literacy Night, May twelve, pre-K, Mother's Day Tea Time, uh, May fourteenth, Happy Mother's Day, everyone, May eighteenth, Spring Concert, May twenty-third, the next board meeting, May twenty-sixth, Field Day, May thirtieth and thirty-first, the eighth grade trip to Woodlawn High.
Can I just correct one of those dates, I'm sorry?